So, Anne, you're up again for AB 2021-268. And that's your presentation on the recommendations from the Homeless Strategies Work Group.
Well, and I'm sorry that you have to see me twice. So I have some documents that I will share again. And does this one show up? Great. So when, so we were asked to help the Homeless Strategies Work Group gather the information and the data needed so that they could make some recommendations to the county council. And if you recall, when you created the Homeless Strategies Work Group, their role was to look specifically at shelter opportunities. First and foremost, it was how to create a 200-bed shelter. That was accomplished. And then, secondly, to look at other shelter. And so when we were putting together information to provide to the Homeless Strategies Work Group, we worked with the city on this. But we knew that the first part of a needs assessment is to look at what do we have currently in terms of shelters. And so this document shows all the different shelters that currently are in operation in Waukesha County. Some shelters are drop-in day-to-day, which is that third column from the right. And some of them are scheduled admissions. For instance, we have a number of specialty shelters, as you'll see here. And these specialty shelters focus on specialty populations. So some work, obviously, with domestic violence, some with refugees, some with people with serious mental illness, some families with children. So as you go through this, and I won't go through all of this, but I just wanted you to know that this is what we do always. The first step for any particular needs assessment is to make sure we know what we have. And this helps us then identify, so what don't we have? Here you'll see that the total beds, and this is how we're kind of counting the number of, the capacity of our shelter. Depending, some of these shelters will take families. So depending on how many are in a family, anywhere between 450 up to 516 beds are available on any given night in our community that are shelters. So first of all, any questions about that? All right. So then, our next thing was to look at, so what are the identified needs and gaps? And this is really what we were trying to figure out, not only looking at the inventory, but also, again, a lot of the data collection, both the quantitative data that we do as part of our work, as well as some interviews and qualitative data. And so the way I put this together was really by population or issue. Population wasn't always the most appropriate category. And then what information do we have about that? So in terms of needs and gaps, families with children is at the top of this list. And sadly, as you've heard already, the COVID pandemic drove a number of families with children into homelessness. And at the time, we presented this to the Homeless Strategies Work Group, which was a couple of weeks ago, 65 to 85 families with children were residing in motels. That was unheard of because not too long before that, we were at functional zero with families with children in homelessness. And we were feeling pretty good about our ability to do that. We have, since this time, gotten a number of these families into permanent housing with some increased case management services and some rental assistance. So this number is lower, although I don't know what it is today, but we are continuing to get people into, or families with children into permanent housing, knowing that motels is really not the way to go, but better than being unsheltered. Another need we identified was the young adult population, 18 to 24. Sometimes they are more vulnerable, often were a vulnerable, living unsheltered, simply because of their age and their lack of experience, not to mention their brains aren't fully developed in terms of, you know, judgment and things like that. So we knew that last year, we put together during the winter months, an overnight shelter for young adults, and approximately 20 young adults utilized that shelter. The other growing population in our homeless population is elderly women, sadly. I think I fall into this category. Elderly only. I am fortunate to have a place to live right now. But this has really been a concern for us, again, a very vulnerable population. We did work with the YWCA to get some more shelter beds dedicated with some of the grant funding we got. So that has been helpful. And then the other we know is medically fragile, people who have significant disabilities or medical conditions that make them vulnerable to living unsheltered. And then, of course, special populations at risk. This was something that we hadn't initially understood very well, but our homeless advocates have been very helpful in clarifying that there are some people who face a higher risk of harassment and even potential harm. And they would benefit from shelter opportunities that maybe don't mix with a larger population. LGBTQ, BIPOC, people with significant obvious disabilities are unfortunately targeted at times. And then, number six is not a population so much, but an issue that we, as we were doing our work, and obviously, given the protests this winter, there were a number of protests. But we also know that there are a number of small encampments already in place throughout the county and that access to waste removal, toilet facilities, et cetera, is limited. And so that was one issue that was significant. And then the other thing we learned with tiny homes is that, and it was interesting, I heard part of the discussion at the planning committee on tiny homes. But when we work with Commerce or with HUD, we must meet certain conditions in order to qualify as a shelter. So when it comes to tiny homes, they actually need to have these criteria met to even be considered a shelter, not even housing, but just a shelter. They have to have the ability to adjust the living structure to the climate. So it has to have heat or an opening window if it's the middle of summer, a fan. They have to be a semi-permanent structure to prepare or eat food. So if not within that tiny home, then nearby, not just a tent, that doesn't really count. The living structure, the actual tiny home, must have four walls, a ceiling, and a door that closes. And reasonable access to sanitation facilities, less than 100 yards away, must be there, which is the ability to shower with hot and cold running water, toilets, you know, with plumbing. And then electricity must be to the living unit. So we had a couple, we asked, we have two tiny home villages now in our community. And Commerce told us they, quote, "barely qualify as shelters" because they don't have all of these things quite to the level they should. So for us, we also were looking at, okay, so if we invest in tiny homes, if we put public monies into this, they need to be at the level of qualifying as a shelter. And then, what we also knew in our research is that local government may not be the answer to everything here. There are some types of shelter desired, and we've heard this in some of the Homeless Strategies Work Groups as well, where people wanted something that local government simply isn't going to be the provider. That we know that we need to identify humane responses to people living unsheltered, but that we may not be able to provide the type of shelter they want. Certainly, I know some of you have heard that some folks would prefer to just live the life they want, but maybe it's not one that the government can support. The other concern we had, which, you know, is fluctuating, but at the time we presented this to the Homeless Strategies Work Group, we know that there was significant underutilization of available shelters. This was incredibly troubling to us because we knew that some of that underutilization was a result of misinformation purposefully being distributed and that it discouraged people from using the Lighthouse Mission Base Camp, for instance. Those people then maybe were in another type of encampment. Some of our case managers gave us stories, basically horror stories, of horrible abuse that happened for some of those who were most vulnerable, who had been doing really well when they were at base camp. When they were discouraged from being there, went to another camp, were assaulted, and it was pretty distressing for the case managers, not to mention those of us who try to make people's lives better. Another issue, and I know some of you have brought this up before, is methamphetamine use. This is one of our greatest challenges right now in the housing program, not to mention just shelters. And that the use of methamphetamine, actually, it contaminates buildings and it contaminates living units, it contaminates apartments. And for us, it's just a terrible thing because it costs so much to fix that damage. But also, people under the influence of methamphetamine sometimes can become very aggressive, very volatile. And again, law enforcement oftentimes needs to be called in, or people are harmed as a result. Methamphetamine is a horrible drug. And then, some other issues, this one you won't want to hear, but there are limited shelter opportunities in our county neighbor to the south of us. They did add some capacity, and that was good with their shelter grant, but they do not have a night-by-night quick-access shelter like our base camp. And we, we know that there have been times when first responders have transported people up here to our base camp or our White House mission, simply because it was available and they felt, you know, obligated to help people who are unsheltered get into shelter. But we, as a single county, certainly, we're not going to solve homelessness that is a national issue or a state issue or even a regional issue. That we, we are doing the best we can and still have plans to do more, but we really can't take care of other counties' residents. We, we really want residents to be able to seek shelter in the counties they live in. And then, finally, the point-in-time count did go on as planned. Although we weren't required to do outreach this time, our volunteers that did participate wanted to do so. And so what we found is that the people living unsheltered actually mirrored this 2020 count. 218 were living unsheltered this year. But at that time, we also knew that that night, there were about 100, or 80 vacancies in shelter spots. So it looked like we actually had fewer people living unsheltered this year than we did the winter before. So we did the housing inventory, we did the needs and gaps. Now I'll go through the recommendations, and are there any questions about this so far?
Councilmember Brown?
And you're on mute, council member?
Sorry, Ms. Deacon. The 218 living unsheltered, that was people who were not in base camp, not at the mission or other places, correct?
Correct.
What was the total count of unhoused homeless?
So here is the point-in-time count data. The, the unsheltered is up at the top. And the first line is emergency shelter. The second one is transitional housing. The unsheltered here was folks that were living in probably tents.
Right. So, so we've jumped from 707 to 862.
Right. However, what we also knew is that at that time, there were 80 vacancies in shelters. So the shelters were not being used.
Right. But our overall homeless population has increased by about 20%.
Probably not that much. And again, this is raw, simple data. The report is coming out soon, and it will explain things in much greater detail. So I don't think I'm prepared to do that right now, but there's a lot, a detail behind these numbers. And so then, so then, these are the recommendations that the Homeless Strategies Work Group is providing to county council, which was your request and your direction to the Homeless Strategies Work Group. And that you wanted this group to make recommendations relative to shelters. And this is that product. And you asked them to do it as expeditiously as possible or expediently as possible. I think the COVID pandemic obviously created some additional challenges. So maybe this didn't come to you quite as expediently as it needed to. But this was really broken down into short-term, meaning next winter. How, how do we make sure that these things are in place by next winter? And then some longer-term goals that are maybe a one-to-three-year prospect. So, of course, overarching goals up at the top. But here are the recommendations. One is, let's ensure that we continue to provide motel stays for families with children until we all get them back into some better permanent housing.
Anne, can I ask that real quick? Are those prioritized in the order that they're presented? No? Okay, it's good to know.
No, we actually think we need to do all these things. And, and the good news is, some of them are in process. The second one was, again, to establish an overflow winter shelter to offer individuals when base camp is full. We didn't need overflow this year, sadly, because there was a protest and people didn't want to use base camp. But we would still provide this to make sure that when the months during the winter are extremely cold, that people still have additional space, so 30 additional spots. And that we would continue to establish severe weather shelters. What we know is that some people won't use base camp, they won't use the overflow shelter. But when it's particularly severe weather, even then, we found that some of them were willing to use those severe weather shelters. So we still want to continue with that practice. Something that is ongoing, but that we're going to beef up, is establishing a data collection process to assist in ongoing analysis and planning. We need to make sure we really understand who is living unsheltered and what needs must be met in order to get them sheltered and eventually housed. And one of the things we want to do is make sure that we use the homeless outreach team to help gather some of that data. That will be really important. And to continue supporting our specialty shelters. As we talked about, there are folks who have disabling conditions that make them too vulnerable even in a large shelter and that we need to continue to support the shelters that we have for those folks. The next one was support continuation of the current tiny home villages, as well as the pending one that is being funded by the City of Bellingham through Road to Home and the Low Income Housing Institute. But we also didn't, we really recommend against any further investments in the number of taxpayer-supported home and cabin sites until we do some more in-depth research to ensure that the need exists. We have to figure out, besides just the misinformation in the vitriol that occurred last time and the lack of use of the current shelters, which, as you recall, the Homeless Strategies Work Group first priority was to develop that 200-bed shelter. But what is it that we really need to know? The trends in shelters are coming and going. Tiny homes was it for a while, then buying motels was it for a while. Making sure that you can actually staff a motel 24/7 to make sure that people are safe and the community around it is safe is very, very expensive. And then, again, there's other trends that come and go. So for us, rather than just leaping on the current one, we thought we need to be much more thoughtful about what is it that isn't provided that people are needing. And so we would not recommend any more tiny home purchases until we complete that work. And then, again, we just want to encourage local elected officials to work with Skagit and Island Counties to increase the shelter capacity for the residents because we want their residents to be served in their own hometown or their own home county. So those are our short-term recommendations. And I will tell you that, and you may have heard, but the state legislature did allocate a good chunk of money for construction and rehab to create that waystation at the State Street Health Department building that would provide the shelter for medically fragile. And so that was one of our goals, and it looks like that one is, been, provided the opportunity to move forward. So that's a great opportunity. And then, in terms of longer term, which is really the one-to-three-year period, we are working actively right now with our community housing partners, as well as the city, on developing some interim housing for families with children so that it's not permanent housing, but rather than motels, which are not the best option for them and are a bit more transient in nature. We really wanted to set up some interim housing units that can serve as an alternative and make sure we had a place where they were stable enough that case managers could work with them on next steps, get them into permanent housing. We also established the shelter and services for people who are medically fragile. I just talked about that, but that's, that's on the road. And then, of course, the other long term is the relocation of base camp. They currently are in a leased building that will run out after a few years. And we need to make sure that they can relocate to a permanent home and obviously, working closely with the city on that because of zoning issues and other things like that. So those are the recommendations from the Homeless Strategies Work Group. They fulfilled their directive relative to the ordinance that you created or that created them. The question, of course, is, so who's going to oversee that these recommendations are implemented? And the recommendation for that is that you task the Waukesha County Housing Advisory Committee with this work. The Housing Advisory Committee, if you recall, was set by inter-local agreement among the county and all seven cities. It has three advocates on the committee. It has tribal nation representatives. It has housing developers, and then it also has small cities, City of Bellingham and county representation. So it has a lot of weight and influence. And their job is to oversee all aspects of homelessness services and housing. And they meet on a regular basis. It's staffed by the Health Department. And they should be tasked with ensuring that these recommendations come forward in terms of implementation and also that regular reports are provided to county council so you know that the work is being monitored and is progressing forward. So those are the recommendations from the Housing Strategies or the Homeless Strategies Work Group. And I'll turn it back over to you, Barry, for questions and discussion.
Okay, thank you very much, Anne. Let's start with questions and comments. We'll start with Councilmember Donovan.
That is very comprehensive, thanks for that. What's the years left at the Cornwall Base Camp location? Three?
I'm embarrassed to say that I don't recall. It seems to me it was a three-year lease with a one-year option for extension, but it could be four with a five-year. But I think it's four years.
I think, I thought it was three with maybe one, but because that's, it's already one year. We're one year into that, it's coming up quicker than, than we thought. But I, I think the recommendation at the end to, to put it to a regular standing committee, to put this body of work to the, I'm sorry, bronchitis on the name of the housing.
Housing Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good plan.
Councilmember Brown?
Deacon, you must have been reading my mind, or I must have been reading yours, because just before you started, I actually instructed the staff to send out a draft resolution to, to make that very recommendation you've just said, which hopefully the council will see this evening. But I completely agree with you. I think the, the work of the, you know, we've, we've had the full, the final recommendations from the Homeless Strategies Work Group. And I, I think the, the Housing Advisory Committee is the right one to then take forward and move this ball forward.
So I guess one thing that we can do right now is, is we can, I would entertain a motion that we accept these recommendations.
So move?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations put forward by the recommendations that Anne just presented. Discussion? Councilmember Frazee?
I, I would like to discuss one of the recommendations. First of all, thank you for all this. It's very comprehensive and everyone who worked on it. Getting, getting Skagit and Island County on board. If you have any recommendations, maybe, maybe that's what you're going to bring forward to us. But to start that communication, whether it's a letter or something like that, we'd be open, I'd be open to hearing that, maybe everyone else too, to get them on board.
I may ask the county exec to weigh in. I know he had talked about the Swiss as one potential avenue, but I'm not sure what all you have in place for communication with your colleagues in the region.
Is he frozen, or is he there? Oh, he's there, he's moving.
Seth Paul, did you hear what Anne was saying?
Did you hear what Anne asked you, Seth Paul?
Reading something else, I'm sorry. It was other urgent matter. Yes, please, can you ask it again?
I'm, I'm sorry, Seth Paul. I, I may have thrown you under the bus, not on purpose. But there was a question about how a local elected officials would work with our neighboring counties on encouraging them to increase shelter capacity in their own communities. And I think you talked to me about Swiss, and maybe there are other opportunities where those discussions could occur.
Yes, I have actually already reached out to Skagit County. I had a good conversation with mayor of Burlington. And they have ordered, I believe, 70 tiny homes from 360 modular. They came and looked at ours, and they do that. And they were, of course, late for the last year session, but they have some planning and their county is planning to do some more work. I will follow up again with, with the commissioners, that what they are doing countywide. I think the Mount Vernon, City of Mount Vernon is also participating. Burlington took the lead, and they said, we'll provide this space and we will invest money for the tiny homes. But we need a shelter, like a base camp type of shelter for, for them to establish. So I offer them that we can provide you any help or guidance, what we can.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, one thing I'm curious about in the recommendations, triggered after what Mr. Zadu said about our neighboring counties investing more in tiny homes. This sort of seems to say, we're going to support what we have, but no further investments. And I'm, I'm wondering, they seem to have a decent record. And I'm I'm wondering, they seem to have a decent record of rehousing people. So what 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 is the hesitancy there?
I think twofold. One, some of our specialty shelters have a much higher success rate in housing people. Not that, I I think Homes Now has done an admirable job and I would not want to take anything away from them. But I do think that there are a number of people where how shall I say this? I think Homes Now also screens who lives in their communities. And I think we're still looking at some people who are not interested in living in a real structured place. And so for us to invest in tiny homes before we're clear about how we would do that, who would live there and is that going to meet the needs, that's really what we were saying is don't jump to invest anymore until we've done more of our homework there. Because I'm not sure it's the answer for everyone. And and we've got to figure out what that answer is. And some, like I said, some people who are homeless, what they want is something that local government will not be providing. And so then we also have to find other communities programs that may be willing to offer something that the county can't support. So it's not, don't ever do it again, it's give us time to do our research.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge we have with any of these alternatives is is the mission or Homes Now or any of these groups is really not set up to deal with someone who engages in violent behavior or is an active user of meth. It it is. It's just, and it's particularly difficult to combine those people with a vulnerable population who's either you know, a victim of previous to victim of domestic violence or someone who's trying to get off meth. You just can't, I I just don't see any successful model of mixing those two populations together.
Anything else?
Maybe.
Executives to do?
If I may, I just wanted to add that in addition to the way station, we started that planning more than two years ago, but we were not hopeful that we will be able to get money so fast. And I think I just want to commend council that when we brought the plan to the council last year, that we are working on this proposal and council giving us the consent, which allowed us to to participate in that application to the legislature. And there we are, we're with four million dollars. And and I think this is giving a lot of excitement to P-South, all three partners, Opportunity Council, as well as Unity Care to to to, you know, carry on to bring this project to fruition. The other thing is that I have been taking up, I just had a meeting with all the CEOs of of affordable housing, you know, like Cultural Land Trust, Mercy Housing, Opportunity Council. And I sat down with them to work out a strategy how in next five years we can make a difference. So one of the things we are trying to do is is I met with, then I had another meeting with the developers and landowners and asking them how they can help the local community, local governments to increase the availability of of affordable housing. And of course, we passed fifteen ninety, which will be helpful and we are going to see that how we can use some money from the EDI and maybe maybe if possible, some money from American Rescue Plan to do that. So there are two categories. One is sixty percent and below AMI and the other one is is higher AMI, which goes up to eighty percent to hundred twenty percent AMI. So that's a workforce housing and this is low income housing. So so we, when we say word affordable, there is the shades of that in between. I know we cannot fight the market to bring the prices lower for all housing, but I think we are taking steps, even if we can do ten percent of the new developments housing and ask, work with the developers on the new projects to allocate multifamily units or single family homes or combination of those duplexes, fourplexes and bring them into this arena. And all these CEOs of nonprofit organizations are very excited with this opportunity that they can then, if they can get that land or that opportunity to participate in multifamily housing, then they can put together the rest of the money from State Commerce, Washington Housing Trust Fund, as well as HUD or other federal sources, even WSDA has some money for these things. So we are looking at a very comprehensive overall plan. It just started. It will take us a few months to to fine tune it, but I just wanted to apprise the council where we are going with this for, we are developing a five-year plan, not just one season to the next season. So so I just wanted to share everybody. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So a yes vote here would be a vote to accept the recommendations, just that, accept them. It's not a vote to implement them?
It's actually, yes, to what you said, but it's a recommendation to the full council. We'd vote on this again tonight.
Maybe I missed it. Is there funding associated with it?
Councilmember, this is Ann Deacon. We, by sending these recommendations, basically directing the Housing Advisory Committee to hold accountable the implementation of these recommendations, the Housing Advisory Committee is going to have to figure out the funding issues. Some of the recommendations and projects are already underway and funding has been identified in other places. If there's funding that can't be identified, we'd probably be coming back to the council and talking about that, but I I think that the overall strategic plan for how to get all of this going would come to you from the Housing Advisory Committee. But I will say we already have funding in place that covers some of these things, so hopefully that would help.
I was going to add this, what Ann has said that that this will be as the projects develop. We are giving them, these are the priorities or these are the recommendations. And once the Housing Advisory Committee starts bringing up the projects or match them to the projects, these recommendations, and then we will get the requests for funding. And and they may be reaching out for that funding themselves and we we and and City of Bellingham would be the sporting organizations helping their applications or in some cases, we may be providing funding from our sources, like I mentioned, American Rescue Plan, which is over three years and the fifteen ninety, the funds approved by the council recently as well as EDI funds. So we are not just throwing it, here it is the recommendation and here so many million dollars. That's not our intent. Our intent is that these are the recommendations, come up with plans to meet these recommendations, implement these recommendations and piece by piece over time. This is not something we can accomplish in one or two years. I I'm thinking, you know, maybe between one and five years, step by step. But we will be looking forward to seeing their needs for money and and match the sources with that. And some of those funds will be from our local funds and we'll be coming to the council for that.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, I yeah, I'd probably get a vote no on this, but it's not because I don't think it's a good plan, probably, I just I I want to see the the funding sources before I start voting yes on stuff.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, Councilmember Ellenboss, I I understand the concern. I think this is just setting the priorities for them to go out and secure the funding. The 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 actual approval of the funding would actually be something that would come back to the council at a later date, once those sources have been identified. So I think there's there's a considerable amount of transparency that will happen in the future and a considerable amount of opportunity to actually vote yea or nay to approve any individual program and its funding. But we have to set the priorities first.
Right, but I guess that's what I meant when I said voting yes on this would be accepting the plan, not implementing the plan. Because it it might be a good plan, but if it comes at the costs, you know, of other programs or too much, too many dollars, well, then it's not a good plan, so. See that I'm getting at there? So I I would vote to accept it. I don't want to vote to implement it.
And then that vote happens later with with a lot more detail.
Yeah, I think you've got it right on the head, Ben, just the word accept. That's that's what I, that's what I think Councilmember Donovan's motion was. Is that correct, Mr. Donovan? That's correct. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Tyler Byrd, I believe is not, has not joined the meeting. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Then Ellenboss?
Yes, I accept it.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Ethic Kirchner? Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
That passes, let's see, what do I have, six to zero with Councilmember Byrd absent, no, six, five to zero. With Councilmember Byrd and Kirchner absent.
You are muted in your vote, Barry.
I voted yes. So that is five to zero to one five to zero with two councilmembers absent. Any other? Anything else for the committee as a whole?
Barry, this is Dana. So I I just wanted to confirm about the resolution that Red mentioned earlier. Was that something that's going to be added to tonight's meeting or?
That was my intent. It's up to Barry to decide as a chair, but that was my intent.
Yeah, I think that was the intent.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll see you at six. We are adjourned.